Welcome to Town Hall, and thank you for attending a Gilbert Public Meeting. Here are a few things to know. The meeting will be held in the council chambers. Should additional seating be needed, you may watch from our lobby. If you would like to speak at today's meeting, you'll find both agendas and speaker cards at the front counter in the lobby. Our staff is here to assist you fill out the cards and find the corresponding agenda items. All speaker cards from the public must be submitted prior to the start of the meeting. The Town Council is committed to providing an environment where everyone's voice is heard during public meetings. In an effort to preserve order and decorum, here are a few rules and guidelines we ask everyone to follow during the meeting. You may bring signs and similar items into the council chambers, but these items may not be held above shoulder height or otherwise obstruct the view or block the path of members of the audience. Disruptions impact the flow of discussion, potentially intimidate others, and detract from the purposes of the meeting. Therefore, disruptive behavior, including, but not limited to, cheering, shouting, booing, or the use of profanity, is prohibited. Applause is only permissible during the presentations and proclamations portion of the agenda. Threats directed toward any individual or group are prohibited. Speakers may not campaign or advocate for or against candidates for office, or ballot issues, or otherwise attempt to influence the outcomes of elections. A full list of meeting rules is displayed at the entrance of the council chambers. During the public hearing portion of the agenda, and during communications from citizens, when your name is called, please come forward to the podium, then state your name, your town of residence, and begin speaking. Remarks shall be limited to three minutes. Citizens who are at the meeting and wish to donate their time to a single speaker must fill out an individual card and then combine their speaker cards. In such an event, one person from the group shall be designated to present their remarks, which shall be limited to six minutes. If one speaker is speaking on behalf of others who are present, the mayor or vice mayor shall read into the record the names of those whose time is combined. No person other than the individual speaking shall enter into the discussion. Officials on the dais may not respond to any questions or comments during communications from citizens. However, the council may ask questions during public hearing items. All comments and questions shall be directed through the mayor or presiding officer. Thank you again for attending a Gilbert Town meeting, and for your participation in local government.
Good evening and welcome to the November 19th, 2024 Gilbert Town Council meeting. First thing I'd like to do is remind everyone to turn off or silence your cell phones and devices so that they don't go off during the meeting, Councilmember Torgerson.
Yes, ma'am.
I will call this meeting to order. The first item on our agenda this evening is the invocation by Rabbi Israel Nelson of Beth Emanuel Messianic Congregation. Rabbi, are you here? I do not see the rabbi. Vice Mayor, would you like to offer a short invocation this evening?
Certainly, we can do that.
Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we are so grateful for this opportunity we have to be gathered together this evening. We're thankful for the participants in tonight's meeting, as well as those of us who are charged here with the welfare of the community. We pray that thy Spirit will be here, will prompt us in the things that we say and do, and that it will also help us to find the answers to difficult decisions when necessary. We ask that thou will bless each member of this community, that they will feel the Spirit of Gilbert, and take that into their hearts and help one another. And we're thankful for this time together in this evening, and for thy Spirit, and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you for pitch hitting there, Vice Mayor. Next, for our pledge of allegiance, it will be led by the mayor's youth advisory committee students that are here in full force tonight. Come on down to the front. Tonight is one of their monthly learning days, and we combined it with them attending a Gilbert Town Council meeting so they can see how this actually all comes together. If everyone would please rise. Would you like us to stand, Kirsten? Turn around, so your backs to us, please. Yeah, if you'd like to step in, that would be great, just let my coat there, or I just put it on the floor, sorry. I feel, I feel like I'm still standing on the dais and you're still taller than me. How is that possible? Thank you, my ex-student, it's so great to have you here tonight. And it was fun coming upstairs and answering a few questions for you. Next, I will ask our town clerk to please conduct the roll call.
Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chuck Bon Giovanni.
Here.
Councilmember Bobby Buckley.
Here.
Councilmember Jan Kaprowski.
Councilmember Kathy Tilke.
Here.
And Councilmember Jim Torgerson.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Thank you, Chevelli. This evening, Councilmember Buckley is joining us virtually, so you'll hear a voice from the sky, I call it. And Councilmember Kaprowski is supposed to be arriving a little late, so we'll expect her to arrive any time now. The first item on our agenda this evening is presentations and proclamations. And the first item up is a presentation recognizing the 2024 MVP Award nominees and winners for the town of Gilbert to be presented by organizational development consultant Andrew Hirsch. Hi, Andrew.
Hi, Mayor.
Well done turning on the mic, Andrew.
Thank you. I've watched plenty, you give great instructions, so.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, and everyone in attendance tonight. My name is Andrew Hirsch, and I'm a member of the organizational development team for the town. One of my duties includes supporting the internal employee recognition programs, including the annual MVP program. MVP allows people and employees to recognize and showcase the achievement of their peers, supervisors, and colleagues over the past year. Employees are nominated based on their accomplishments that align with town values, driven kind, bold, and humble, through written nominations and are anonymously scored by a committee of eight or more town employees. And tonight, I would like to reflect on our values and highlight the four winners that have emerged from last month's ceremony. When I call your names, please stand to be recognized, and after, I would like to invite the mayor to join the winners for a picture, if that's all right? All right, I'd first like to begin with the value of driven. So we are passionate and driven to excel, always hungry for new challenges and opportunities to achieve more for our community every day. Average doesn't interest us. We are always pushing ourselves for amazing. We understand the importance of our work and strive every day to give Gilbert the future it deserves. And our winner for that category of driven was Marissa Morales, who is a legal secretary for the town. Unfortunately, she couldn't make it tonight, but we send her a huge congratulations on her win.
Cute dog, Marissa.
Yes. All right, next, I'll move on to the value of kind. We believe in the inherent worth of all people. We are inclusive and spread Gilbert kindness in our words and actions. We promote emotionally intelligent leaders who put people and relationships before processes and tools. We serve each other and our community with respect and civility at all times. We believe the ability to connect and help is just as important as talent and knowledge. And for the winner of kind, we had Lauren Oxford, who is a digital communicator strategist, has worked for the town for seven years, so send a huge congratulations to Lauren.
Yay, Lauren!
All right, next, we'll move on to bold. We innovate and take risks so we can keep growing, improving, and learning. New ideas and innovative approaches mean sometimes we'll stumble. If we do, we quickly refocus to find the best path forward. Gilbert is a safe place for big ideas. We are committed to constant improvement and doing things differently. We value curiosity and creativity, knowing that the community's solutions often require new approaches to complex challenges. And for the winner of bold is Alicia Echevez. She's a HR specialist for the towns, worked for the town for one year, so a big shout out to Alicia.
Congratulations.
And then finally, the value of humble. We have a flat organization where titles are the least interesting thing about us. Service is at the heart of everything we do. We all have meaningful contributions to make. We embrace the servant leadership model and relish opportunities to facilitate the success of others. Authenticity and collaboration are critical to our success. And for the winner for humble, we had Daniel Henze, who's a waste supervisor and worked for the town for two years, so congratulations to Daniel. So thank you again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, and congratulations again to the winners on a great accomplishment, and thank you for over the 100 nominees, nomination committee, and everyone who made MVP a great opportunity to highlight all the hard work our employees accomplish every day for making Gilbert the amazing place that it is. Ask the winners to kind of come forward to the floor and take a picture with the mayor. And Patrick.
Small business up next. Thank you. Next, we have proclamations that we'll be handing out. The first one on our agenda this evening is for Small Business Saturday. Could I ask Sarah Watts, the CEO and President of the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce, to please join me? And who do we have from Economic Development? Dan Henderson, anybody else from Economic Development that we'd like to invite down? I don't see anybody. I did put my glasses on, I swear these are getting smaller, Sarah. Whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 34.7 small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 61.1% of net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ 45.9% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas 68 cents of every dollar spent in a small business in the U.S. stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas, 59% of U.S. consumers aware of Small Business Saturday shopped or ate at a small, independently owned retailer or restaurant on Small Business Saturday in 2023. And whereas, the town of Gilbert and the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce actively work in partnership to support our local businesses as they create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and now therefore I, Bridget Peterson, Mayor of the town of Gilbert, Arizona, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2024, as Small Business Saturday, and encourage our community members to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday on November 30th, which is celebrating its 15th year in 2024, and shop small and shop local throughout the year. Congratulations, Sarah. You can take this, want to say a few words? Talk about our collaboration with the catalyst for businesses.
Absolutely. Well, first of all, thank you so much for continuing to recognize Small Business Saturday. We know businesses are the lifeblood of our community. The Catalyst is a wonderful entity within the town of Gilbert. It's a partnership between the Office of Economic Development and the Chamber, which allows us to serve businesses from ideation through exit. So anyone in the Gilbert, town of Gilbert, who's looking to start a business, just wants to explore opportunity, or really grow business, the Catalyst is a great destination, and we hope that everyone will take advantage of that, and also shop Small Business Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's get a photo. Let's move over just a little to the middle. Supposed to be giving that to you, Sarah. She's gonna make me cry. Okay, next up, Gilbert Days. We're gonna recognize Gilbert Days with a proclamation, so anybody here from the Gilbert Corporation, please come on down. These folks run, the Gilbert Promotional Corporation have been a part of Gilbert Days for years. It's in here, so I'm not gonna say it all, but they run the rodeo, they are responsible for the Pony Express, so many different things, and I'm so glad to be able to recognize you this year. And come on down. Look at this, I'm underdressed with all of you, in your queens. Oh, girls, hi, I met you guys not too long ago. Hi. Yeah, hi, how are you?
How are you?
Good. So this proclamation for Gilbert Days, whereas for the past 46 years, the Gilbert Promotional Corporation has actively promoted the spirit of the West and Gilbert, Arizona, and through the annual celebration of Gilbert Days with the parade, a rodeo, and a festival. And whereas, the weekend of events is enjoyed not only by the residents of Gilbert, but many from across the state of Arizona and by visitors to Arizona. And whereas, the Gilbert Day celebration officially kicks off annually with a Pony Express 100-mile ride. Whereas, the Gilbert Days rodeo will take place the weekend of November 22nd through 24th, 2024, at the Horseshoe Park and Equestrian Center. And now therefore I, Bridget Peterson, Mayor of the town of Gilbert, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of November 17th through the 24th, 2024, as Gilbert Days in the town of Gilbert, and do urge Gilbert residents to attend the parade, rodeo, or festival events scheduled for this weekend, and join in celebrating Gilbert Days. Congratulations. Who wants to say something? Do you want to say something?
I can.
Want to say something?
Sure, if you want me to. All right, yeah, right. Just want to say, the rodeo's happening this weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and it's a good time, so tell all your friends and family, it's a good time to get out before the chaos of Thanksgiving next weekend, so get out and enjoy the rodeo this weekend.
I want to give you each an opportunity to just introduce yourselves and tell us your role with the, with the group.
Hi, I'm Patty Williams, I'm a lifetime member and a co-royalty chair.
I'm Kim Graziano, I'm just a committee member.
I'm Sarah Peace, and I do the VIP chairman.
Heather Carducci, and I'm a Pony Express chairman.
My name is Jen Padilla, and I'm over the bars.
Hi, my name's Kathy Padilla, I'm a lifetime member, and I'm over sponsorship.
Hi, I'm Caitlin West, and I'm a Little Dudes princess.
Hi, I'm Alba Padilla, I'm the 2024 Gilbert Days Rodeo Princess.
And I'm JD McGee, the president.
I'm Courtney Seymour, the treasurer.
Josh Morris, rodeo security.
I'm Michelle Lance, I'm a lifetime member and director of the royalty.
Hello, I'm Bobby Padilla, I'm a lifetime member. Remember, Regional Park has it going on too with the parade, so it's not all about rodeo. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thanks for coming. Yeah, parade, rodeo, and festival. Let me take, let's take a picture, you guys. And I see that Councilmember Kaprowski has joined us. I said that she would be sneaking in here. Next, we have on our agenda the public hearing items. We have five items on our public hearing agenda for liquor licenses and one property acquisition. I will open the public hearing, is there anything that anyone would like to hear as a separate presentation? I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the council if someone would like to make a motion to approve the items on the public hearing agenda.
I move to approve all the items on the public hearing agenda as written.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Torgerson, seconded by Councilmember Bon Giovanni, please vote.
Mayor Peterson, I apologize, because Councilmember Buckley's virtual.
Always to do a voice vote.
Yes, sorry about that.
Sorry, thank you, sorry. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Chevelli, sorry, I forgot about that. Moving on to the consent calendar, I will pass that off to Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. We're gonna do things a little bit different, and I want to be able to approve the entire agenda, so we do have a presentation from staff on some questions that were posed to them, of items that were going to be pulled off, but with the presentation, hopefully we can keep everything on consent, so the staff, if you could come forward and make that presentation. Thanks, Alina.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I will not be the only one up here tonight, so following me, I'll be joined by Jessica Marlowe, our Public Works Director, and then Police Chief Goldberg.
So, we'd like to start this evening with just expressing our appreciation at council's request to better understand some of the items that are being presented for you tonight for consideration. We've worked collaboratively across departments together to compile these explanations for you and to provide requested context and background. Fundamentally, all of the agenda items that we present to council are approached with an eye towards our organizational focus areas. So we ask ourselves, do the items presented bring value to our community and our lines of service by providing for a strong economy, prosperous community, and an exceptionally built environment? If these answers are yes for our residents, then we answer that and prepare to present the items for consideration by you. So, with that, let's dive in a little bit. The first items that we had requested to be reviewed for council and discussed a little bit further are items specific to fiber broadband projects in Gilbert. So Gilbert has long desired a robust fiber broadband network and service offering for the residents in our community. It was identified as a wig in 2020 and considered to be a path towards possible. Although the town is not building its own fiber network, many fiber broadband companies have come to recognize what we know and have known all along, that Gilbert's an excellent place for them to be. In the state of Arizona, fiber broadband companies are recognized as utility companies, much like cable, electricity, and gas. As such, once they obtain a license at the state level that provides this recognition, they can legally access our right-of-way. A Gilbert license agreement, and there's two of them before you tonight, Agenda Items nine and 10, establishes standards for permitting and inspection requirements, restoration requirements when the work is conducted, and an annual fee calculation where the companies provide compensation to Gilbert for the space that they occupy within our right-of-way. This calculation is standard across all fiber license agreements in our jurisdiction, and the amount is regulated by the state. There are two license agreements on our agenda tonight, one for Cable Vision Light Path and one for Bicentle. Item 11 on the council agenda is related to the GigaPower reimbursement agreement that you approved in September. This is the final piece of that puzzle regarding the reimbursement agreement. So as you know, GigaPower has a large project that they have determined to deliver in Gilbert, and it does exceed the capacity of our available resources in areas like inspections and utility locates. The agenda item in front of you tonight, being that final piece of the reimbursement agreement, establishes the contractual agreements with two inspections contractors that will provide our teams with additional support to comprehensively inspect the projects related to the GigaPower build. The contingency funds that are being sought in relation to this agenda item will be offset and fully reimbursed by GigaPower as the contract services are being utilized. With that, I'll turn it over to Jessica.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Item number 13 is a list of several cooperative purchasing contracts for vehicle parts and supplies, as well as contracted maintenance service for our fleet department, that primarily will support our solid waste vehicle repair and maintenance, as well as our fire, heavy equipment apparatus maintenance. Having access to the parts and supplies that we need in order to be able to do the maintenance in-house, or having specialized maintenance and repairs done by the equipment vendors when we don't have the capacity or the right specialized tools in order to complete those repairs. Obviously, keeping those vehicles in good working order at all times is really important for us to be able to provide not only our solid waste services to our community, but also our critical fire and emergency response. So those are all, and especially with the long lead times that we have on replacing those vehicles, making sure they're in good working order at all times is really critical. Item number 14 is also a cooperative contract for replacement of street sweepers. With that, when you also have a contingency request with cost escalation for equipment over the last few years, the purchase price for that vehicle has just exceeded what we originally had budgeted, but it was a budgeted expense. Street sweeping is an important part of our environmental compliance team, where it helps us maintain air quality compliance with particulate matter. It helps minimize pollution to our stormwater infrastructure. It helps extend the useful life of pavement by reducing debris. And last but not least, it definitely protects for the safety of the traveling public on our roadways by keeping debris litter free from the travel lanes and the bike lanes specifically. Item number 20 is a task order with Felix Construction for some maintenance work that's happening at our Santan Vista Water Treatment Plant. That is one, we haven't taken the Santan Vista Water Treatment Plant out of service for several years because of the work that's been happening at our North Water Treatment Plant, we've had to keep that plant up and running. This year, the Central Arizona Project is taking the canals out of service to do some of their own maintenance, and so these maintenance activities are things that we can only do when the plant is offline, so the timing of that for the work in January is critical. That particular project, that plant is a shared plant with Chandler. That particular project, that plant is a shared plant with Chandler, and so the $124,000 contract that you see before you is a cost share. Chandler will pay half of that cost for those maintenance activities. And then the last one that I have gets its own slide because it's a approval of contingency and contracts for Phase Three guaranteed maximum price contracts for our wells development program. These are critical to our water resiliency planning for shortages on the Colorado River. This contract you see before you is for multiple different contractors that are working on seven different well sites around the community. With this request, three of those sites will be equipped and completed and give us functional wells. There are four more sites that will have additional action by council in the future to address some water quality treatment and blending strategies. But we've been really lucky with the contractors that we have on board, being able to time all of this work. And by phasing it in multiple different guaranteed maximum price contracts, we're able to keep our contractors moving and keep these projects on schedule. So this is just the next planned phase for these different projects that will allow us to make sure we have the water resource production capacity in place when future Colorado River shortages occur. And I'm gonna turn it over to Chief for the last one.
Mayor, council, good evening. Mike Solberg, Police Chief. Last item is Agenda Item 29. And this is a grant from the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety, and this grant is specific for youth alcohol enforcement contract. This grant would be for $80,100, which would cover overtime expenses for education and enforcement, focusing on underage drugs and alcohol, focusing again on DUI, underage DUI, DUI drugs, underage consumption and alcohol, and provides resources to focus on responding to reports of unruly gatherings and common locations where youths congregate and often would do either drugs or alcohol. Gives us enforcement opportunity and funds to fund that. Any questions for myself or anyone else?
Sorry, I'm gonna change my screen back. Vice Mayor Anderson has his mic on first. Was that just for the consent?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Councilmember Torgerson?
I, the reason I asked for these items to be brought off is not for any critical point of view, but for people to understand, let's say with what you just presented, things are being done consistently that seem to fly under the radar with people. And this is another program directed at teens, alcohol consumption parties, fights, et cetera, that would normally just go on a consent agenda, and people don't hear that. And I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time from your night to explain it so we can have a little bit more open dialogue with the public. And I wanted to thank everybody that stood up here and presented normally during a consent agenda because with Jessica, they're upkeeping, people think we have gold-plated trash trucks. They're buying parts to keep things going for years and years and extending the life. There is no frivolity. And the water, the wells, people aren't understanding that the tens, and in the end, hundreds of millions of dollars that will be spent to make sure we have water, and that's why there are costs associated that so many people don't like. But it's going through consent agenda and nobody hears it. And I wanted people to be able to hear these things that are happening. So it's not that it stings any less in your pocketbook, but at least you know why it's there. And that is the sole reason I pulled these things off consent is for people to understand where this money is going and what's happening. It's consent because nobody disagrees. This has to happen. There was gonna be, there's no discussion about the fact that it has to happen. The discussion needed to be with the general public so you can see where this money's spent. And that is the only reason I took all of your time this evening, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for any of the staff? Vice Mayor, did you have the advocacy center as one of the items to discuss this evening for your consent agenda?
Was that, which item was that?
22.
No, nobody had brought that up.
This, I guess during the small groups, it was requested that a short presentation be done on the advocacy center? Would everybody be okay with just having that done now?
Mm-hmm.
Thanks. It's always good to bring it out. Chief, back up. You're back up. Thanks, Chief.
All right, Mayor and council, we want to take this opportunity, I believe you said this was Agenda Item 22. Sorry, I forgot the number. But we wanted to present with you an update. We have the contract coming before you today for our construction company. And so just to update not only the council, but our community on the need of our advocacy center. We will quickly cover, this looks long, but we'll move quickly through this. The project need, how it's been funded, our approach to managing the process, the bid results from the bid. This is different than our normal C-MAR-type project. What's in the numbers, and then managing risk, and our construction partner, and the next steps. So moving on. Gilbert is not immune to crime. While we're a safe community, we have domestic violence, we have homicides, we have sexual assaults, child abuse, elder abuse. We're no different than any other community. And as our community continues to grow, that rate of crime continues to grow as well. This graph here represents how our population has grown over the last nine years. And with that, the incidence of specifically domestic violence and sex crimes, both on children and adults, have continued to increase as well. This next slide is a summary of that graph I just showed you, which shows a 63% increase in that timeframe of adult victims for sex crime-related incidents, a 45% increase in child-related victims in sex crimes, for an overall increase of just over 50% increase. On the domestic violence cases, just short of 49% increase in adult victims, a 50.4% increase in children that have been victims of domestic violence for an overall increase of 49%. So as our population grows, the incidents grow as well. Our community has recognized the need of an advocacy center and the resources it provides. In 2019, the recommendation to council and to the town were to provide additional resources and immediate connection with services and resources. And second to that, to reduce domestic violence, sexual assault, and abuse, and human trafficking in Gilbert. The advocacy center that you've been briefed on several times over the last three or four years provides for those recommendations. And before you tonight, we want to talk to you a little bit about the process. This graphic is somewhat symbolizes the process now. We rely on Mesa and Chandler's advocacy center, but it's not in Gilbert, and it's an additional trip. It's away from home for our victims. We want to streamline that process. And our advocacy center will do that. It will streamline the focus on the victims so they aren't re-traumatized. They're focusing on the prosecution of the crime, but also providing resources for the family, the victims, and their support group to move forward so that this doesn't happen again. The Gilbert Advocacy Center designed, as we spent the last year-plus, focusing every single aspect from colors to design, the floor plans, the flow of traffic on the victims, making sure that we're minimizing trauma. On our group, we had a trauma-informed specialist who is a professor up at UNLV that reviewed everything we did, every design, our furniture, our colors. Everything we did was designed with the victims in mind to not re-traumatize our victims, guide them through the process, get them on a successful path for the future. A normal advocacy center provides for investigations. Our advocacy center will be different and unique in the fact that we will provide immediate aftercare through counseling services for the victims as they move on through the criminal justice process. Part of the important part of an advocacy center is cutting down that timeline so that we get the information, we get successful prosecution, and we provide the services right away to our victims so they can successfully move forward. With that, I will turn it over to Ryan Blair to talk about project timeline.
Good evening, council, or Mayor, council. Appreciate this opportunity. This is exciting to be up here once again talking about the advocacy center. Just to go over some of the project timelines, 2019, 2020 is when this project need was identified through the Gilbert Community Needs Assessment. 2021, the council approved and designated the use of ARPA funds. And that's our federal funding part of this project, and our pre-design was completed. December of 2022 is the procurement of our AE and our PMCM. And January 2023 to April 2023, our design started and our business capes was developed on the project. Further on during the design process, September of '23, we did our value engineering workshop. September of '24, our project design was completed. And then April of '24, today, our procurement for construction. Oops, went the wrong way, sorry. I'm still going the wrong way. Okay, sorry. So just talk about the ARPA funding a little bit. December 31st, the ARPA funds must be obligated by December 31st. That basically what that means, it must be under contract by that date, or we lose the opportunity to be able to utilize the ARPA funds of $22,951,878. December, the other deadline is December 31st of 2026, that we have to have this completed by that date. And just FYI, our current schedule on that is way before that, so we're happy to be able to have that with us now, to be able to follow that process. Just a little bit of federal procurement process. As I think, believe Chief mentioned, typically our process is a construction manager at risk process. And that is, for those who may not know what that is, that is to bring the contractor on board during the design phase. And then the risk is basically given to the contractor if any things are missed or whatnot. So unfortunately, we couldn't follow that process because of the federal compliance. So we are doing a design, bid, build, and it's exactly what it says, is we design it, we bid it, and then we build it. So we don't have that flexibility of having that contractor on board during the design phase. So here's the process that we followed, and it's a little unique to a design, bid, build, which is really an awesome thing, is we actually did a RFQ advertisement that we were able to do a pre-selection of contractors. So instead of having this bid of contractors that go to everybody, which it did, but this basically vets out those contractors that we feel confident and comfortable moving to the next step and actually to build this. And a few slides here, it'll go into more detail. Here's some of the evaluation for our interviews. I won't go through all of the questions and things that we were thinking about. But again, we wanted to make sure that whoever the contractor was, that they, we were comfortable and confident as a team because this is a low bid, whoever was on this list and they got advanced to the actual, be able to bid on this project, that we were comfortable with whoever that was to bid on this project. So that's really what makes this unique. And still following state statute and federal compliance. And the evaluation of our criteria for bids, this is our construction documents that each contractor has to ensure that they submit as part of their bid to be able to be considered responsive and responsible. A few more timelines. So April, May, the RFQ is issued. June, the town pre-qualified six different contractors or vendors. September, the IFB or the bid was sent to six different bidders. And October 17th, 2024, the town received a total of five bids, and four were considered responsive, which means somebody forgot to add some of those, that paperwork in there, so they were considered not responsible. And moving forward, so here's the bid results. The lowest, apparent lowest bidder was Gilbain, and they had, as you can see, they had $18,578, some change on their lowest bid. Talking about risk on this project, since it is a low bid process, and since the contractor was not on board during the design process, is, the risk is fairly high to, for unforeseen conditions and utility conflicts and different things. So the town decided to put a 15% town-controlled allowance on top of the bid that Gilbain provided. We rounded that up from $2.7 million to $3 million. And then after taxes and everything was added to the total contract award, it would be $21,624,935. And this is just our budget when we first started out with this project, just as a reference. From our professional services, construction management, but to really focus on the construction cost, it is $30 million, and you'll see the bid that came in, the total bid was around 21, but that doesn't account for some of the relocations, the permitting, to higher quality assurance, things like that to be on the project. So those are additional funds that's required that's outside of the contract. And in addition to that, the furniture and equipment. Since this was a design, bid, build project, we wanted the opportunity for town staff to be able to still select furniture of what they wanted. And to be able to do that, we had to try to get that out of the process from the contractor. And so we have a separate vendor going through that RFQ process the same way and selecting some vendors so that we can have the opportunity for town staff to be able to select some of their equipment, trying to be as flexible as we possibly can of how we normally do business. And again, federal funds is a little over 22, just under 23 million, and then general funds coming in after the obligation of the federal funds, a little over 20 million. There we go. Just a little bit about Gilbain. So this is a, unique for us. We were hiring a low-bid contractor that we've never utilized before, and so we did some research on them. And this is just a little bit about them, you know, established in 1870, and that's not a typo, 1870, building in Arizona since 1999. And as you can see in their portfolio, they're a national company that's done a lot of work around the nation, and I believe in 20 other countries as well. Some of their awards is the number 11 in the top 400 contractors of 2024. So really, this is a, you know, we kind of put our, put the town in this a difficult situation with a low bid, but then we got really blessed or lucky, whatever you want to call it, to be able to have a good contractor on our team. And the second piece of this is our PMCM and our architect have both worked with Gilbain and have nothing but positive things to say about them. Here we are, next step. So here we are in November. We're going for the construction contract, get those funds obligated by our deadline. Groundbreaking ceremony is coming up in January, and then construction will also start in January with a completion date. Again, this date is the obligation date of being expended by December of '26, and that our future phase is to be determined. And again, our recommendation to the council tonight would be to proceed with the award for construction services with Gilbain.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions or comments for Ryan or Chief Solberg? Thank you for the presentation. I think members of Gilbain are here. Thank you for joining us this evening. And if our meeting goes a little short, maybe we'll get to actually meet you when we step down from here tonight. Moving on, Vice Mayor, what do you have next?
That's it, unless anybody has any other further questions on the items that were presented. No? With that, I would make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, which is Items nine through 33.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Bon Giovanni. We need to do a voice vote, so all in favor, please say aye.
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 Councilmember Buckley?
Oh, aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Is that all you have, Vice Mayor? Thank you. Moving on to the next portion of our agenda, which is administrative items. Item number 34 is a discussion update from the Community Engagement Task Force. Councilmember Tilke.
Thank you, Mayor. We met on November 4th and participated in a facilitated compression planning exercise to capture ideas from the entire task force. These, there were 111 original ideas produced, and the first round of priorities were categorized into our task force silos, which are education, awareness, and resources. I want to give a special thanks to Kathleen Dollar, who's an amazing community partner with Dignity Health for her facilitation. Our next meeting is December 9th, where we will finalize priorities by evaluating SMART goals, level of impact, high, medium, low, and the amount of work to accomplish these goals. We understand that the town council cannot mandate participation from others within the community, but we feel our longstanding relationships will help us work together on the recommendations we're gonna present to the council on December 17th. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Tilke. That group has been very busy in a short timeframe, so thank you. And yes, Kathleen Dollar is a treasure to the community, not just Dignity Health, but to the community, so thank you for that. Next on our agenda is communications from citizens. Back to you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. We value the participation of our community members and the robust exchange of ideas. While we understand and appreciate the passion our community members bring to these sessions, we must remind everyone that clapping during the meeting is not acceptable. Also, playing of music or showing videos may- Also, playing of music or showing videos may subject the town to copyright infringement and is not allowed. As your name is called tonight, please come up to the podium and state your name and your city or town of residence, and you will have three minutes to speak unless otherwise indicated. First up tonight is Bridget Vega.
Thank you, Chief Solberg and Commander, for meeting with us and answering some of our questions. Thank you, Assistant Chief, and those who attended late the night to honor Preston Lord. As we do want to remain focused on teen violence, not only in the schools, but in our communities, as it is a critical issue that affects the community as a whole, but also the student's safety and the well-being of the children. It impacts their ability to learn in safe environments. Again, teen violence can manifest in various forms, including bullying, physical fights, drug or alcohol abuse, suicidal ideation, and even more severe incidences like shootings. As children are looking for a place of belonging, of being seen and heard, addressing this problem requires a multifaceted approach. We ask that you, as a council and the community task force, act as a liaison to help bridge the gap with Gilbert Public Schools. If you guys can share your alarming stats from the Arizona Youth Survey presented by your council to the public schools, that would be helpful, as I'm going to leave this copy with you guys as well. We did present to them tonight the CUSD Random Student Drug and Alcohol Abuse Program that they have. We would like to share and see if you guys can act as a liaison to get that implemented as well for Gilbert. But also, I still do want to address, as a Community Engagement Task Force, we have yet to see you show up to the last couple of community events, especially around teen violence in Preston Lord. That has been, and would have been, a great opportunity to show up and connect with the community. We did have police presence, but again, we do ask and invite that you guys bridge that gap and start taking the steps as we work on communicating and trying to heal as a community. As well as leadership continues to turn a blind eye and not address the root cause of teen violence, as again, there is no zip code. But we also want to address, and we do appreciate the law enforcement and enforcement campaigns on curfew, but we would like to revisit the unrule gathering and holding parents accountable, as there still are parties going on, including in VRBOs, as well as if we can get an amendment on the brass knuckle ordinance and adopt the language from TEMPE, as they have the most comprehensive language. And again, let us not be bystanders and commit to breaking this cycle of harm and fostering a community built on love, empathy, and accountability. Together, we can create a brighter future for generations to come, as it starts at home and leadership in this room.
Thank you. Next up is Bethany Britton. Is Bethany here?
Hi, thank you for listening tonight. This is my first time ever speaking at one of these things. I'm speaking as a very scared parent who lives in Gilbert. My child attends Mesquite High School. There have been two gun incidents at their school in the last month, and it's terrifying getting these text messages and these emails, not knowing what it's going to say until I open it up, and it's the worst in your head that you're thinking. Every time, it seems to be a little worse. And my child, they're scared when they go to school. I didn't used to think metal detectors were necessary, but my thoughts have changed on those in the last few years. I grew up in Mesa, I went to Mountain View. I remember when Keno got their metal detectors. I want to see my child safe at their school. And we did just move downtown a few years ago, and we were really excited to do that, but we don't feel safe down there anymore. We've had two instances of gun violence in the last six months at our intersection. We don't feel safe walking the short half-mile to the restaurants downtown anymore. I can hear the cars and the parking garages still racing every weekend. It's just scary having teenagers right now in this area. We've already been in the national news for it, and I don't want to be in the national news for it again. And I just spoke at the school board meeting before this, and I just, again, want to follow up and agree with Bridget, that I would love to see communication between this board and the school board, so that our students can feel safe when they go to school. And that as residents, we can feel safe downtown, and that's all, thanks.
Thank you. Next is Carissa Arnold.
So I actually want to address the garages again, because nothing's really changed down there. I was driving through downtown the other day, or a couple weeks ago, I know the picture got sent to you, but there was a teenage girl sitting on the ledge of the garages. I hear the cars every night, the weekends are horrible, as she was saying, residents in downtown hear them all the time. You guys had said that you would try the security, it hasn't worked, nothing's changed, kids are still hanging out in the garages, there's still loud cars down there, you still have kids sitting on the ledge of the garages. It's not going to be long before another kid dies and falls off one of those ledges. So coming back to you and asking you guys again to start taking this seriously, pull the security, either start doing validated parking for your guests, or, and/or make that top level to where it's employees-only and nobody else has access to it. Because mark my words, as one of our team members had said before, somebody is going to die soon. A month later, a kid fell off, it is not going to be long before it happens again, and your residents are being affected in downtown. When you have these cars going up and down all night, everybody off of Gilbert Road hears it. It's not difficult to know what's going on down there. The cars are loud, and it's constant. I hear them with my windows closed, so, and I'm not even in downtown. So something needs to be done to address this, because clearly, what the solution that was implemented is not working, as we had already addressed, so thank you.
Thank you. Next up, is there Michael Benson?
I'm donating my time.
You're donating your time to Bill?
Yes.
Okay, Bill Spence is up next. Six minutes?
I've never, I've never used this, the button I pressed. Mayor and Council, my name is Bill Spence, and I'm a resident of Gilbert. I wanted to start out by saying I was really happy to hear about the Victims Advocacy Center kicking off, and that's something I think is a definite high priority three CIP project that benefits the residents. I was provided a list of priority three CIP projects, and I think the list is the water treatment, wastewater, a lot of these other things. There's a couple priority threes that I don't agree with, but I'll save that for another meeting. Over the last two years, I've been provided and have reviewed tens of thousands of public records that have been legally obtained from multiple sources. They include emails, phone records, text messages, audio and video recordings, and statements by people willing to testify under oath. I've recently been contacted by members of the media and others regarding my knowledge of certain issues within the town. I'm aware of investigations are currently in progress, and several complaints have been filed with numerous agencies, including at least two that have been filed with the State Attorney General's Office. I have been told that one of these complaints alleges, quote, "serious public corruption and gross misconduct by public officials in the town of Gilbert," unquote, and that I have been identified as one of nearly two dozen witnesses that may have information. There were several complaints filed last year against members of this council. I was shocked to recently discover and confirm from multiple sources that key evidence related to these complaints was deliberately withheld from public disclosure without a clear legal justification. Additionally, I have discovered a flaw that may result in significant loss of information while fulfilling certain records requests. This flaw and other issues require that certain requests be divided into several separate requests to receive the full results. I've attempted to communicate my findings with the town. While some of you in this room may be upset, it was this council that stated its desire for investigations to be handled by the Attorney General's Office. I am not aware of all the details of these complaints. However, I am in support of the external organization conducting these investigations. They have the authority to obtain records that are personal, privileged, or otherwise protected, and they can compel sworn testimony of all witnesses, including those that are not affiliated with the town, something that is not possible during investigations by the town. In the wake of Preston Lord's murder, I opted to no longer pursue the issues with council. It had been explained to me that Gilbert's reputation for safety, prosperity, and political stability were vital in attracting new businesses to Gilbert, and that my complaints were, quote, "bad for business." The council then quietly eliminated the complaint process and changed procedures to move public comments to the end of council meetings, a move that proved to be wildly unpopular with the public. The message was made clear that this council was not interested in conducting investigations or being held accountable for their actions in any way. Vice Mayor Anderson even campaigned on putting all these investigations behind us. I completely disagree. I started this here with the intention of supporting my friend's campaign and nothing else. However, I continue to receive more and more information regarding issues with the town from numerous people. I was provided with records that show greater detail regarding issues that occurred in 2023, but also that members of this council have continued to conduct themselves in a questionable manner throughout this year. This council is so hyper-focused on spending money, raising taxes, raising service fees, raising your pay, executing personal agendas, and protecting Gilbert's reputation for safety and prosperity, that you've turned a blind eye to the people of Gilbert and are ignoring the realities affecting our everyday lives. We are a big city with 292,000 residents, and we don't feel that you're listening to what we're trying to tell you. I have a few specific concerns I want to address. I have here a police report from Ms. Lalani Hutzinger. I'm stunned by the circumstances and the involvement of council members in this report. I'd be happy to discuss this in detail further, but I'll be shocked if the lawsuit isn't filed following, following their pre-trial disposition tomorrow. I am concerned by what appears to be weaponizing the public safety. I have found I've been provided with several records that identify concerning level of involvement and influence by council members in the initiation and conduct of police investigations. I've obtained records that lead me to believe that meet and confer is being used as leverage in exchange for campaign donations and assistance with executing the political agendas of certain council members. I am continuing to discover issues with the disclosure of public records by the town and with the general transparency of council members. Although you all have town email and town phones, many of you decided to conduct, have decided to conduct town business using your personal phones and personal emails to avoid disclosure through public records. How much time do I have? I'm not sure, how much time do I have? There it is. Since I have a little bit of time, I do want to address, I was really happy to hear about some of the issues with pulling things out, so we know what we're spending our money on. I wasn't going to discuss the spending habits of this council. I don't agree with them, I think that the budget process was flawed. You talked for exactly zero seconds, this last budget. You talked more about your pay raises than you did about the CIP projects and about proper and responsible fiscal spending. The Repairing Education Center is something that I've been arguing about. We have the whole list, and I was provided a list of about 25 priority three items for CIP, for the CIP projects. The Repairing Education Center is a 13.5 million dollar project that exactly one person in this town wants to have. I would like for this council to address some of these priority three projects. Let's focus our money, spend our money where it is best served, where it's serving the public, and that's all I have. I just want to remind you that we don't have setbacks, we have opportunities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Susan Boreo.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Susan Boreo, I'm a resident of Adora Trails in very south Gilbert. I have a couple things to talk about, and my first subject is the cattle are back, roaming the streets of the community, and we are looking for help in making sure that there isn't going to be an incident either with residents walking on the streets or the cars. They're enjoying, I guess, our grass and ornamental plants, and prefer that over the bales of hay that they can get at home. And unfortunately, now, a lot of them are very dark in color, so they're even more difficult to see at night. So it's basically just an update. What I really wanted to talk about was the patriotic celebrations that the town of Gilbert holds, and say kudos to you all, and the committee that puts it all together. I attended this year the veterans. Previously, I've attended the Memorial Day, 4th of July, and this year I came to the veterans. And I am overwhelmed with how professional and inclusive those celebrations are. I love seeing the kids being involved, because they should all learn about this, and I love the opportunity to participate in something very patriotic. I traveled for business and went to some very lovely places, Belgium, France, Japan. And after my very first trip overseas in 1981, so this is a time ago, I came back to the United States, stood in customs, and said, "God, I love the USA, it's the best country in the world." So thank you for the opportunity to be able to participate in those patriotic celebrations. And lastly, I just want to say to everybody to have a safe and happy holiday season, and for the council members who will not be back in January, I wish you all the best. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. That concludes the communications. I'll just remind the council that they may respond to criticism, ask staff to review a matter, or ask that a matter be put on a future agenda, if there's anyone that...
Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like staff, if we can, to get us a copy of the TEMPE brass knuckles ordinance, so we can take a look at that, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Tilke.
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't sure what the timing of the report out on the parking security was going to be, but I'm hoping that will be coming up soon. Thank you.
Great comment. And for the resident that spoke at the, at the school district office tonight, you can connect with Assistant Chief Besagli, he's sitting right over there, he just raised his hand, he's got his glasses on his head, he would be happy to connect with you on that. And Susan, if we could connect you, I think, with our inner gov office about the cows in Adora Trails, Rob Boar's sitting over there, second row, same row as you, Susan, actually, over at the end of the row, so if you wanted to connect with him, we would be happy to have you do that, too. I know the cows have been an issue down in Adora Trails. Otherwise, I think I covered the two main points that we were discussing. Moving on to, on our agenda to future meetings, one item is listed, meet and confer for after the 1st of the year. And moving on to communications, report from the bearded town manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I've got a number of staff and great things I'd like to highlight for you tonight. Start with, move to the next slide, we had a trunk-or-treat event, which a number of our personnel in various departments participated in, we had a huge turnout for it, and we have some contests each year. And for our winners in each category, best town overall was by Public Works Solid Waste and Recycling, they had a minion trunk-or-treat display. Most creative was by Forensic Services in our police department, a psychic readings trunk-or-treat display. And those spooky was by Detention in Police as well, out-of-control inmate trunk-or-treat display. It was a great event for all the families and the children who got to participate, and they gave away a lot of candy. Next, I want to congratulate our Office of Economic Development for winning a Golden Prospector Award. The Office of Economic Development, collaboration with higher education institutions and workforce development partners to grow career pathway training for Gilbert's growing population, earned recognition. Gilbert identified a partnership with Maricopa County Community College District, which illustrated they had the foundation necessary for long-term economic which illustrated they had the foundation necessary for long-term economic growth and success of this type of program. Scholarships were offered to Gilbert students enrolled in courses related to emerging technologies and a strong focus on STEM innovation. Congratulations to the entire team in economic development. They also won a Golden Prospector Award for the work they did as part of the LPGA tournament that was in Gilbert earlier this year. The campaign utilized the internationally visible LPGA Forward Arizona Championship, Gilbert's first professional golf tournament, to develop a sophisticated and informative commercial that reached nearly a million viewers. The tournament attracted 18,584 attendees, 4,735 unique visitors, and accounted for about $1.7 million in visitor spending. And I believe we've got their video that they created. They did great work and well-deserved recognition and that video was actually produced in-house by Oscar, who's a member of our digital government team. He does outstanding work. Next, I want to recognize one of our town leaders, Assistant Town Manager Leah Reinheimer, who received the 2024 Women Leading an Excellence Award in Government. This award recognizes women who lead by example, mentor and expand women's contributions in the public sector. Leah has been a transformative force in advancing women into leadership positions within Arizona's local government. Her commitment is exemplified through the founding of Gilbert's Native American Management Internship Program in 2013, which empowers indigenous women to serve in leadership roles across tribal and public sectors. Congratulations to Leah and that was recognition that was very well-deserved. We're thrilled to have her on our team. And lastly, I'd like to recognize our wellness team within the People Team. Gilbert was named one of the top 100 healthiest workplaces in America. The prestigious awards program celebrates organizations that prioritize the well-being of their employees. Gilbert placed number 47 on that list out of all the employers in the country. Congratulations to the entire wellness team and the People Team and everybody who helps support that program's success. That's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Congratulations to everyone that was just recognized during Patrick's manager update. Now we have a report from council. Would anyone like to offer Councilmember Bon Jivani?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's talk about Parks in Iraq. So Gilbert Days Festival. Head to Gilbert Regional Park for, for the Gilbert Days Festival on November 22nd and 23rd. This family-friendly event will feature live music, games, inflatables, food, shopping, and more. Pre-sale tickets are $5 per day and children 12 years and under are free. The event will go from four o'clock to nine o'clock on both days. Let's talk about our Gilbert Days Parade. The 2024 Gilbert Days Parade celebrates our town's heritage with the theme of Decades Party. This year, over 75 local schools, businesses, and community organizations will showcase floats and entries that highlight iconic styles and trends from their current, from their favorite decades. This longstanding tradition brings together community organizations as they march down Gilbert Road every fall. The parade kicks off at 8:30 a.m. on Saturday, November 23rd down Gilbert Road between Juniper and Elliott Roads, and we hope to see you there.
Anyone else? Councilmember Kaprowski?
I just wanted to highlight that as council members, a few of us have been doing some additional coordination. Recently, three of us attended a quarterly meeting with the three public schools within the town of Gilbert, Gilbert Public Schools, Hegel Unified School District, and Chandler Unified School District. It's been a great opportunity to share information between our police department and with those school superintendents. And it, I think that this will be a strong partnership moving forward that will continue quarterly and we hope to expand it to include charter schools as well. So that's definitely something that, that is positive that has come out of, the work that's been discussed earlier this year. And I'll let Councilmember Tilke maybe talk about our East Valley Councilmember meetings as well.
Next, actually, is Councilmember Torgeson?
No, let Kathy go and then I'll go.
Thank you. We started this past year an opportunity. We kind of took it from the fact that the mayors get together every quarter and we thought it would be really nice to meet with our peers in the, in our East Valley community. So we meet with our fellow council members and we talk about unique trends going on in our community, discuss how they're handling them. We've been able to come back and share ideas with our staff of something that might be able to be considered into the future. And so I really appreciate when we get together. It's all very informal, so there's no action being taken similar to what you do, Mayor, I think. But it's, I know, in some ways, it's, it's nice to know that we're not the only one that has issues that need to be addressed. But it's also heartwarming how everybody is willing to share what's going on and, and actually acknowledging that there are, there's work that we all need to do together and that a lot of the decisions we make don't stop at our boundaries. And so thanks for the opportunity to talk about us doing that.
Councilmember Torgeson?
I just wanted to say I had the opportunity to go to the National League of Cities Conference in Orlando or Tampa. And one of the greatest things about it was hearing where other towns and cities were. And many of the things were far ahead of concerns that are just now rising for other people. We've pre-planned so far ahead on many, many things. And there were interesting things like talking about the electric air taxis that'll be coming within the next 10 years. They figure it's here. Amazon doing drone deliveries and it starts in the West Valley next month, I believe, the trial program out there. But there was a lot to leave with feeling very good about the staff that serves this community being as focused on things coming where people, they're having thousands of cities listen to this as though it's new news. We've been working on it for three years. And to see that we have a staff dedicated to the people of this town to be ahead of the curve was, was very much enlightening. And it happened last year, but even more so this year. And it was, it was, it was just a very great experience for me to, to feel that. And I'm going to say one thing about Tampa. I'll take dry heat over wet heat any day.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
I believe you have a birthday. And we want to, we want to wish you a happy birthday. I think there's some goodies in the back for you.
Yeah, some cupcakes in the back.
Good.
Big six-oh next Tuesday.
I wasn't going to say that.
Well, I, I said it two months ago when it was Councilmember Torgeson's birthday. We're exactly two months apart in age and yes, thank you.
Well, happy birthday.
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
Yes, the voice from, from up above.
Oh, the voice from the sky.
Would like to speak.
Yes, Councilmember.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Well, happy birthday, by the way. And I, I would like to add a few things that the Economic Development Department has been doing and about the Heritage District. So the, the Heritage District, well, they're featuring what's called the Gilbert Postcards. And well, they will feature five postcard mailing stations set up inside downtown area locations. This new activation supports the ongoing public art initiative in Gilbert's Heritage District, referred to as the Community Canvas, which aims to integrate Gilbert's history, historical and cultural identity into the public spaces. Each station will offer a different postcard that visitors can fill out and drop in the mailbox for special delivery. These postcards feature exclusive illustrations created in collaboration with the design team at Cactus Country depicting various Heritage District locales and icons such as the Water Tower, Heritage Marketplace, and Hernway. The postcards will be mailed to spread, to spread holiday cheer directly from Gilbert, Arizona this season. And according to the Dan and the Office of Economic Development, one in four visitors to Gilbert will visit the Heritage District during their stay. And nearly 27 million visits took place in the Heritage District over the last five years. The source was the 23, 2023 Placer.ai. The Hello from the Heritage District postcard stations will be in place starting the week of November 12th. So that started a few days ago and they will run through the new year or while the supplies last.
Is that all, Councilmember?
And that, that is it. That's the end. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other reports from council? I'll move on to report from the mayor. First, I have my, I think I have my, my schedule for the past month because we haven't been here for a whole month and it was quite full. One of my favorite things to do was attend the Veterans Advisory, the Veterans Advisory Board held their annual Veterans Day celebration here. And we do hold it off of Veterans Day so that students can specifically be involved in that celebration. And it was very well-run. We brought it back here to Town Hall during the day and we had a great turnout and very proud of that group for everything that they do. And then I walked in the Veterans, the East Valley Veterans Parade on Veterans Day with the Gilbert Fire Department and Police Department. And one of the highlights of my month was a Waymo ride to our MAG Regional Council Meeting. There we are. Chandler Mayor Kevin Hartkey invited myself, Queen Creek Mayor Julia Wheatley, and that's the City of Maricopa Mayor Nancy Smith in the front seat to come out to Chandler City, City Headquarters there down Chandler City Hall. And we rode in a Waymo all the way to our MAG Regional Council Meeting. Now, let me tell you folks, Waymo doesn't use the freeway. So it was all surface streets from downtown Chandler to downtown Phoenix, First Ave. and Van Buren. It took us an hour to get there, but it was so well worth it because the four of us had a great time. We had great conversations and discussions. And so thank, very big thank you to Mayor Kevin Hartkey for inviting us to do that little event. We, we talk about different modes of transportation all the time and that was just one really fun way that we got to celebrate that. And this weekend, as was mentioned, it is Gilbert Days and there's some road closures for you. Please have a heads up. Check our social media. As you can see, Gilbert Road will be closed Saturday from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. They come through and clean up from that parade pretty darn quick. So you'll be back downtown pretty fast. There's no Gilbert Farmer's Market this weekend because of the Gilbert Days Parade. And you will also see that the half marathon will cause closures along Rucker Road from north Gilbert down to south Gilbert at different times in the morning. So please be aware and please be prepared for those things, too. Yesterday, yesterday I attended what I consider now to be the kickoff of the holidays every single year, which was the kickoff of the giving machines in downtown Gilbert. If you haven't visited, these big vending machines that you can go and purchase donations at for nonprofits, it is a great way to celebrate the holidays and just give back. There's two machines. This year they're located right in front of Hale Center Theater in their courtyard right downtown Gilbert, across the street from our Water Tower Park. The park is still under construction, so they couldn't have the machines in the park this year. There are six local charities that you can donate to and a couple of global charities. And it is an amazing way, like I said, to just give back. And there are all dollar, different dollar denominations to be able to donate. And you can donate all kinds of things like meals, $5 for meals, that's 25 meals that you can donate. You can donate shoes and books and soccer balls and sometimes chickens and goats to around the world. So please, if you haven't had the opportunity to go visit those machines, they are provided by the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. They cover all of the administration fees for those machines. No money goes back to the church. All the donations go strictly to those nonprofits. And they come here every spring to hand out really ginormous checks, too. So please, if you haven't done that, it is a great way to celebrate the holidays and to give back at the same time. One more thing about the Veterans Day event, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that State Representative Jennifer Pollak attended that event. She is always a representative that comes and celebrates just about every event that we have going on here in Gilbert. And she is, she decided not to run for reelection to the state legislature. And I just wanted to give her a huge shout out because she really has represented the city of Chandler and the town of Gilbert so well for the time that she has served in the state legislature. And she's an amazing woman and I will miss working with her, that's for sure. Thanks for mentioning Cops and Goblins and the trunk-or-treat, Patrick, because I attended that and walked around. And I don't know who was having more fun, the staff or the kids walking around and picking up candy. I would say probably the staff. Chief was down there handing out candy at one of the trunks. But I met this really sweet family with two little boys and they said they have come every single year. It's something that they look forward to. They love the police department. And finally, the wife said, "You look very familiar. Are you, are you the mayor?" And I said, "Yeah," after we had talked for about 10 minutes. So it was very cute and very sweet and thanks for doing what you do because I think it really makes a difference in the community. And I can't imagine how much candy you handed out that night. That is all I have to report. Everyone, please have a very safe and happy Gilbert Days weekend. Please be safe out there and happy Thanksgiving next week. Stay safe with your families and enjoy your time. I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting. I have a motion and a second. Motion by Councilmember Tilke, second by Councilmember Bon Jivani. All those in favor? Aye. Motion, meeting adjourned. Thank you.